First, I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening and thank you all for coming out and expressing your concerns or, well, positives or negatives in reference to the issue that we have before us this evening. I do want to wish everyone, I'd like to start off with something very, very positive, and that is that all of you have a blessed Thanksgiving that's coming up, and hopefully you're able to spend that with family and friends. And in the times that we are going through, there are many people who won't have a family to go to, or food to eat, and so just let us remember those and try to touch someone along the way. I have a few housekeeping items as we call this meeting to, this work session, to order at this time, not work session, but this public hearing, to order at this time. We will have anyone who would like to speak, so that we can do things in an orderly fashion and move along, and those who would like to speak will have an opportunity to speak. We're going to ask you to line up on this left-hand side, so that when your turn comes, you'll be able to walk up to the podium and speak. Anyone that has any type of disability, please, and I said disability, and please raise your hand, or let us know, and we will get a microphone to use out of respect, so you won't have to make your way over. But I think you would have to have someone in line that can hold your place, so that we know where you are, and then we can handle it from there. Now, one of the key things is those who come up to speak, you have three minutes, and we will be timing you, we have a, Ms. Thornhill will be keeping the time for us, and we will be letting you know when the three minutes is up. We all are adults here and have issues, some of us have feelings, well, most of us, you're here because you have strong feelings in reference to what's before you, before us, but we ask that we all act mature and be the, and be the adults that we know we can be, and your concerns will be heard, and we will be able to take those from there as far as the planning commission, as we make our decision, as we forward it to the Board of Supervisors. So, at this time, now, and I will, we do have to have the approval of the agenda that's before us.
So moved.
Do we have a second? All in favor, aye? All opposed likewise. The Commissioners also, we will be listening and taking notes, but we will not be making any comments this evening, it's just for you to be heard. So this is actually your meeting, and we will, we hope that all who would like to talk will have an opportunity to address their concerns. Now, new business, the first and only item, on there, we will now turn it over to our Director, Sam McLaren. Sam?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can you all hear me? Yeah, okay. A little bit?
Get, just a little, he might can turn yours up just a little bit. But then I'm older than everybody else up here, so.
No, but not everybody's as short.
Oh, there we go.
Not everybody's as short as I am either.
We hear you well now, hear you well, Sam.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to kick this off, and I'll promise I won't be long, just want to kind of introduce the topic that folks are here to speak on and to share their opinion on tonight. The Planning Commission has been tasked by the Board of Supervisors to look at potential amendments to the zoning and subdivision ordinance, as it relates to our A1, which is our agricultural zoning area, and also the rural area, RA zoning. I'm just going to walk through those as proposed currently. Just a little background, and many of you have heard this already, some may not be familiar with this, I'm going to touch on it quickly. About 90% of the county is currently either zoned A1 or RA. Currently in those zoning districts for RA, you can have a three-acre minimum lot, if you have 200 feet of state road frontage. If you're zoned A1, which is our agricultural zoning, you can have five-acre lot with 250 feet of state road frontage per lot. If you don't have that state road frontage, it jumps up to 10 acres per lot today, in both zoning districts. Parcels also in A1 RA are only eligible currently under the minor division allowance, which is the creation of two new lots, plus a residue, so basically three lots every five years. Currently, there aren't any road design standards for minor divisions or family divisions at all. Board of Supervisors is tasked, the Planning Commission, to look at the proposed changes that you see on the screen there, and in our board docs was the actual text, this is just a summary of the text changes, to try to explain it a little bit. There would be a potential increase in minimum lot size in the A1 from five acres today, as I mentioned, to 10 acres. Increase in minimum lot size from three acres today in the RA to six acres in the A1. And then again, divisions with lack of road frontage still require that 10-acre minimum, and that's as it is today. Minor divisions are still allowed in that scenario, basically two new lots plus a residue every five years. New to the subdivision ordinance potentially, new to the subdivision ordinance potentially would be a rural cluster option, and that's it, would be in addition to the minor division, or two plus every five, two lots plus every, every five years. And that's going to be based on, potentially as it's drafted today, would be based on a 10-acre residential density of the original tract. So basically, if you have 100 acres, you have 10 lots available. Also required, at least originally drafted, was a 70% of that tract would need to remain as open space, it would be restricted for further division at that point. Planning Commission during the work session talked about that particular part of the rural cluster provision, and suggests to the Board that that be lowered to 50%. There's also currently drafted a 70%, basically you can only use 30% of your road frontage to develop, Planning Commission suggested lowering that from 70 to 50% as well. Minimum lot size in this scheme here would be two acres, and all cluster lots would be developed at the same time. Again, the rural cluster option would allow for 10-acre density, and again, would have open space provisions, minimum lot acreage of two acres, road frontage provision that you can't use your entire road frontage for that. And then also, there's, there would be potentially a new section for road standards, that would be unique today for Culpeper County. I know you won't be able to see this on the screen, but this is posted on board docs, and I'm not going to go over this in detail, but there's two separate areas of potential road standards. One would be for lots, number of lots between two and five, and then if you, a separate standard for, for any subdivision, that would be more than five lots. Same 50-foot wide easement, 20-foot wide clear area, in the five-class scenario, you're looking at a 16-foot minimum road width, with some type of aggregate base, six inches, and then two inches of stone on top, or some type of hard surface, also with shoulder requirements and minimum grade requirements. In that roads standard section, there were some new, again, these would be new sections in the subdivision ordinance, if it goes forward as drafted currently. One, 737.4 that you see there, would be no building permits beyond two for any rural cluster or minor development, unless that street is deemed completely constructed to whatever standard the Board adopts, if this goes through. The Planning Commission at their work session did suggest eliminating that provision, as well as 737.5, which would require an engineer certification for that road. This is just an example, we've used this example many times over the past several months, but this is an example of an A1 property that is not developed today, that shows what someone could potentially do on a, this is 182-acre tract that's zoned A1, 26 lots after 10 years. That's based on your five along the road and 10 behind. As currently proposed, there'd be about a 30% reduction, you'd look in at 10-acre density there, if you chose to do the minor division, you could ultimately yield 18-acre, 18, excuse me, 18 lots, 10 acres apiece. Shows you an example, and again, this is just a high-level example, this is not a survey or anything of the like, just an example of what a cluster provision that's currently drafted could yield on that same particular property, with an 18-acre or 18-mot density, a 10-acre density for that lot, 182 acres. In this example, you're looking at lots ranging from two to three and a half acres, you have actually 80% open space in this example, 145 acres, and using only 22% of your road Planning Commission did, as I mentioned earlier, suggest lowering that from 70 to 50% as far as the open space requirement, this is just an example of a 50% open space cluster, of what it could do. Lot ranges could go up in that case, three to 7.8 acres, and then using more road frontage to accomplish the same number of lots, just be fashioned a little bit differently. This is an RA piece, again, this is an existing tract in the county that's not subdivided today, it is a undeveloped piece. Zoned RA has a lot of road frontage, and this is what someone could yield at year 11 or year 10, which would be 27 lots over time. This is under today's ordinance. In this particular case for RA, you're looking at only a 15% reduction as proposed, so you're looking at a decrease of only four lots. You know, again, going from three, you can see the lot sizes go to now six, and then 10 in the back. Again, just another example of what a cluster could look like in an RA, using that same density of 10-acre density, you would yield 19 lots in this particular case, lot ranges from two acres to three. And again, just the same example with a 50%. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to, I'll cut myself off there, and make sure we get the folks that are here, really, that want to speak and share their opinion tonight. The Planning Commission will have a public hearing tonight to solicit that feedback. The Planning Commission, as we've discussed previously, does plan to conduct an additional work session on the matter, make further revisions after the public hearing tonight, and then ultimately, the Planning Commission is charged to make a recommendation. You all will make a recommendation that will go back to the Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors, if they see fit, will render any decisions on this matter at a future date, as has not been said. Mr. Chairman, if you have any questions, I'm ready to sit down, I know there's a number of people here that are, that are ready to speak to you all, so.
Let's see. Yeah. Can you hear me now? Yes. It's kind of hard to hear from that mic, especially when the rain is coming down. I don't know what other option we have, but you all, can you hear it pretty well? Yes, kind of, we could hear you until the rain came down, but it's nothing we can really do. But I guess if we speak into that mic, is anyone here who controls that mic?
I'm sorry?
It just, like, there's a lot of bass that's in it, maybe they could change that.
I'm just speaking with what I got. I don't know if I can change that myself here at all.
All right, no problem, no problem, we'll, we'll make it work, we'll make it work.
If Mr. Crouchuck's around or available with Culpeper Media, I'm sure he'll come down and help us as we can.
No problem, we'll, we'll see how it goes, and maybe it's just your deep voice, that might be what it is, okay? All right?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, sir, thank you very much. So we had the overview, and now we are moving to the questioning, and if it gets to a point, for some reason, that we can't hear you well, then we will, you know, let you know. But if we could have maybe the first five who would like to speak, if you could just line up over here, and that way, we, if we got five, that means 15 minutes you're standing, then we'll kind of keep filling in. Oh, these are all the people who want to leave early, I got you. Okay. All right. Again, if you'd like to speak, and you have some type of disability, just, you know, let us know, and we will definitely put you in the, in the loop here too, so. Okay, sir, state your name and all for the record, and we'll move on with three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, my name is Don Haight, Stevensburg District, and I want to thank everyone for coming out and supporting, because this is an extremely important topic, and this goes to show that we are neighbors and we love this county. So again, me personally, I would like to thank you for coming. Once again, I come here, once again, come on Johnny, there you go. Once again, I come, once again, I come here before you to ask for you to save the county and listen to its residents. The residents you see behind me are outrageous. We're going to have to work through this. All right. The residents, I don't really need a mic.
There you go, it's, it's coming in there.
Okay, I'll try, and if it doesn't, see, I don't need a mic, let me do my thing, because this is getting a little bit frustrating. All right, let's try it, see, all right. We're going to do it this way.
No, we, we, sir, we, we're going to try, we have to have you come up on stage and use one of our mics, but take that mic off there, see if we can make it work again, just some adjustments we got to make, so.
All right. Nope, ain't working, in and out. The residents you see behind, see, it's not working.
Okay.
Does it need to be closer here? Maybe we try that.
Go ahead.
All right. Sorry for the inconvenience. The rest, no, it's not working, in and out.
Here comes the mic.
Here comes Johnny. Here's Johnny, I had to do it, sorry.
Okay, I'm too close, all right, just, everybody can hear you. Okay. Everybody can hear you, you're good, you're good, I can hear you loud and clear.
All right. He said I was too close. That's a kind way of saying I got a big mouth, thank you Johnny. The residents you see behind me are outrageous that the Board of Supervisors Rules Committee have created an environment that has caused a lawsuit against the county. It's a waste of our taxpayers' dollars to defend what is rightfully ours. Our land rights are our human rights. Our land rights are just that, ours, and you just can't take them from us by, while masquerading them as a solution for slowing growth. We are much smarter than that, and we, and this will not solve the problem. The real problem is the large tract builders like Ryan Holmes. Ryan Holmes is proposing to build over 700 homes in addition to the hundreds of homes already approved. Please don't waste that time further, reject all of the Board of Supervisors' recommendations, and send it back to them. If the Rules Committee wants, wants to change zoning, let them, let them make it, and allow the full weight of the blame splaying squarely on their shoulders. If those of you who do not know who's on the Rules Committee, Susan Giugnaro is the Chairman, Paul Bates, as well as Brad Rosenberg. The views of the Farm Bureau Board to support the Culpeper Board of Supervisors' downzoning changes is that of just a few Farm Bureau Board members, and does not reflect them as a whole. I have talked to many Farm Bureau members, and not one agrees with their Board. I am a member as well, and I totally disagree with their stance, and I, I don't need them to speak for me, I am totally capable of speaking for myself. The Rules and Personnel Committee of the Board of Supervisors is planning to remove three Board, three Planning Commission members that care deeply about Culpeper and its residents. They want to replace them with people that we feel that are unqualified and do not serve the Planning Commission well. Residents, you should be outraged that the Board of Supervisors are systematically trying to take our rights away and force their agenda on us. We need to get involved, and you need to get involved, and voice your outrage and demand that the three Planning Commission members not be removed. We need members on the Planning Commission that truly care about Culpeper and won't allow themselves to be puppets. Don't, don't say you weren't warned. Property rights are human rights, and Culpeper residents, it's time for you to wake up. They take your property rights away today, next, they will take your, your Second Amendment rights away. Planning Commission members, you have always been there to protect Culpeper, you have always been on the right side of history, and I want to thank all of you for everything you have done for the county. Culpeper residents, you better get involved and take your county back. Make Culpeper County great again, the choice is all yours. Planning Commission members, please don't waste any more of our time and reject this and send it straight back to the Board of Supervisors. Again, Planning Commission members, I want to thank you personally for everything you have done to preserve Culpeper for many generations to come, so we can really enjoy Isle County. I love Culpeper, and I'm here to stay, love Donald Haight Jr., and please give the Planning Commission members a round of applause for everything they do.
Thank you, thank you, sir. I would, thanks for the applause, but I would like to ask everyone to just hold all the applause until the very end, we can, you know, express ourselves, but throughout this, so that it's no, someone comes and something that you don't agree, and you don't applaud and all, so, so that everybody be treated fairly, we won't have any applause until the very end, and as we come to a close. Sir, you're next.
My name is Gregory Smith, I'm Stevensburg District, I've been in that district my whole life, born on April 4th, so I might be foolish morning of this afternoon, but anyhow, I just try to like to get a little bored of Supervisors and the Planning Commission, what kind of went on in this county before this thing took a place. Many years ago, about 1968 or so, the Farmers Co-op was down in Warsaw Place, and they had a fire burned up. So they was trying to decide whether to build back or build back. In the meantime, they went out and located land on Route 3, Jamana Highway, right where the Keller Manufacturing is now. So the forefathers that they were going to try to borrow the money from, to get this started, they told them they needed to go on the north end of town and build, the south end of town was going to be the growing part of the county. Well, it turned around, you know, each one of you now, the co-op was sitting in the middle of that hub, and I just wanted to let that know, that the people in the county decided we need industrial to come into the county, and they started getting that, so after they got the industrial to come in, they decided that, that we need housing to put these people in, and they were trying to get the people to go into housing, so that's when the housing boom started in this county. And today, we are doing the same thing as they. But I just, I farmed this land right here that I'm standing on today for many years, until the county decided to build the Eastern View School. And I farmed a few other lands, Dominion Square at the time, and that grew up too. So it's really hard to stop growth, but I don't see what's wrong with this going here and leaving the situation like it is right now. So that's the end of my stuff, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I think I said something about applause, I'm not sure, but I think that is there, and if you don't, and if you don't, and, and if you don't, we'll have the sheriff, the deputy escort you out, okay? All right, okay, all right, but we, we can all be adults, we can all be adults here, okay? And we can move through it, and we can move through it. Sir, anyone who's speaking, please just don't get close to the mic, that's what they say that's the issue, and, and we're just, the deputies and all are here, and we do want to do things decent and in order, and that's what we will do. So, sir.
I'm Charles Beryl, and my wife and I are property owners in Cedar Mountain District in agricultural zones. We're opposed to what you're proposing to do here. The real problem is, we're facing as taxpayers having to build schools, and that's super expensive these days, and we don't want to see our taxes raised. I don't want mine raised either, but this proposal doesn't do anything about stopping all of these kids coming in here. It's the large subdivisions, and a lot of them, most of them are happening in the town of Culpeper, that you guys don't have any jurisdiction over. This is a waste of time and money, this is a 30-second soundbite, so somebody can sound good to the people that want to protect their view sheds. This is not going to do anything about keeping us from having to pay for new schools. So we're definitely opposed. I happen to think that the cluster part of this makes good sense, it makes sense to keep any development together, and we live on three-quarters of a mile of private road, and I'm opposed to imposing obligations on people that live on private roads if they choose to go live there. I think that's their business, and I don't understand why the county wants to look at that, except as a way to prevent subdivision, so we're opposed, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can you hear me all right, Sam?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Larry Green, Salem District. Distinguished members of the Culpeper Planning Commission, I am honored to come before you as Chairman of the Culpeper Republican Committee. I am proud and honored to represent a strong, united committee. Proof of this was seen in the 2024 election, when the Republicans carried Stevensburg, Cedar Mountain, Jefferson, and Catalpa by, what, what, got it, by 70.5%. I'm sure you know where the Republican Party stands on property rights. We believe in a limited, small government. This proposal is contrary to this, and I believe personally, any person that would support anything besides a small government is not a true Republican. But this is not the reason, the real reason why I personally come to you tonight. Some of the members on this board, some of the members on this board have given your entire life to this committee. I personally want to thank you for the dedication, can y'all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Got to do something about this thing. Some of the, I personally want to thank you for your dedication to this county. What disturbs me the most is some members of the Board of Supervisors propose removing some of you from the board, simply because you don't want to do as they wish, and propose replacing you with puppets to get what they want. The weaponization of the Board of Supervisors is a disgrace to this county. This goes to the same type of behavior the American people have seen against Donald J. Trump by corrupt DOJ. This type of corruption in this county must be stopped, and goes, and anyone that goes along with it should be replaced. Let me make it clear, that not all the members of the Board of Supervisors agree to align themselves to this type of Third World politics. In closing, we all know what this is all about. You have stood by your beliefs, whether I agree with you or not, you have stood by what you believe, and I commend you for that. But the Board of Supervisors is wanting you to act as opposed to do nothing but hurt the people of Culpeper County and steal generational wealth, because you refuse to do that dirty work for them. Either, either way, I stand, either way, I stand with you and thank you for integrity in doing what is right. You are true patriots, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Very good. Hello, testing, good.
There you go.
All right. I just have a simple question.
Give us your, give us your full name and, for the record. Give us your full name for the record, please.
My name is Alan Burkett, and I just have a simple question, I'm trying to understand... I'm trying to understand the, the new proposal, and could you explain how this would affect family divisions? And so that, I didn't see any provision in it for family divisions, and I was wondering how the new proposal would affect the families.
No, we are, we are just here to listen to the concerns this evening, but if you would contact the staff, and they could go over that information and, and kind of fill you in on that, okay? But thank you very much for being here this evening.
My name is Anthony Kletterbuck, and I'm a local home builder based in the town of Culpeper. It's obvious that this change in zoning is, at least it appears to be obvious, that this change is based on our growth in our county. Our growth in our county is significant.
Anthony, excuse me, sir, could you get a little bit closer or make that mic grow a little bit?
If I get any closer, it'll start cutting off.
There you go, now, now, yeah, just bend your head down.
All right. With that said, we've, we're, all counties around us are, are subject to growth, and we're gonna continue to grow. What our issue is, is that we have all this land that's zoned R1 or greater zoning that was done in the nineteen nineties, and that is the majority of the growth that we've experienced in the county and the town. And that is what's creating the pressure, and that's what's creating the negative impact. The buy-right lots that are created and built on each year, it's a low number, and that number is basically insignificant, except it's not insignificant to those folks that create those lots. Some of those folks are farmers, are small landowners, and those folks, their land may be all they own in their life, it may be their retirement, they've scratched and saved and paid taxes on that land their entire history here in the county, and that is what they will use to retire on, or they will put their parents in a nursing home, and it's time-based zoning. And I'm sure many of you know that time-based zoning has been challenged in other jurisdictions and has been overturned. So in order to protect that, the cluster component is good, but the way this is all written, it is far too complex and far too expensive. Going, going back though to who this is significant to, not only these landowners, but it's significant to the Realtors because they, they won't have local land to sell. The local Realtors do not benefit from the large subdivisions and the national builders. They, they're unpaid by those folks. So that passes our locality, it passes our workers, it passes our taxes. But because I'm a builder, I'm here to speak on the behalf of many builders, and it's going to crush us. What it does is, that is where we get the lots to build from, the builders, the plumbers, the painters, the, the electricians, the roofers, all those local folks. Those local folks aren't working in these R1 subdivisions, they're coming from Northern Virginia or from Texas or wherever they're coming from to build these houses. But these ones on these buy-right lots are all your local folks, the folks that have been building in this county for generation after generation after generation. Now, if you're looking to preserve farmland, this is not the way to go about it. The reason is, you're taking twice as much land out of the farming system every time you create one. If you're really, if your objective is to really preserve farmland, you should be going from three and five acre lots down to two acre lots, the time-based component would work for that. And if you want to preserve the time-based component, which has worked in this county, then clustering is a good idea, as long as it doesn't have all these caveats for engineers and state roads and things like that, and two permits before you have to build a whole road, that's impossible. A small builder or a family that wants to develop their farm and wants to preserve part of, for open space, can't afford to do that. So again, that takes it out of the hands of the locals and puts it back in the hands of the people with big money. That, that is the unintended negative consequences of what this does to us. This should be tabled, it should be redone, rethought out. It's already triggered a lawsuit. The cluster component or another component that would give you an option for the time-based zoning would allow you to preserve time-based zoning and give you another option. Is my time up? Is that why you're waving at me? All right, well, I, I'm passionate about this county, my family's been in Madison County for ten generations, and I love the whole area, and I've been building here for thirty-five years. So I'm, I'm not here to harm Culpeper County, I'm here to preserve it and to protect our builders and our trades. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next.
David Martin, Stevensburg District. I am opposed to these changes. While there is some merit to improving and facilitating a landowner's right to create minor subdivisions and protecting ag, tonight's proposed amendments don't achieve these goals and go far too far in removing landowners' rights and making housing even more unaffordable. Specifically, the reduction in density is in no uncertain terms a taking of rights from landowners, and the reduction in building lots does nothing to alleviate Culpeper's affordable housing crisis. Finally, the amendment as proposed is not well thought out, there are no provisions for common space in the clustered areas or community sewer and water. We talk so much about ag, but the tremendous lack of affordable housing is a topic that comes up frequently on local social media. Many individuals, most of them young adults, comment on how they were born and raised here and would love to put down roots in Culpeper with their young families and have their children grow up with their grandparents and extended families, but don't really see this as an option because there is no affordable housing. How sad. Three years ago, Culpeper elected a new board with several being elected under the guise of stopping solar sprawl, a laudable goal. This new board started with solar on Lagann, then went to data centers on ag land, but then they pivoted and went after multifamily residential, both rental units and affordable housing, on land that is already zoned for multifamily residential. And now they're going after single-family detached on land that every landowner currently has the right to develop. This is a taking and well outside of what they ran on. This board came into power as if they had a mandate to fundamentally transform Culpeper, but people voted, but more people voted against my supervisor, Supervisor Gugino, than voted for her. That's no mandate. The pendulum has swung too far in the last two years. In the last two years, Culpeper had five technology zones. Today, we have none. Four were removed, and one is filled with speculators and is constrained due to the proverbial putting all your eggs in one basket. What a shame. In the board's mad rush to fill up this one tech zone, they gave away roughly five hundred million dollars in tax revenue incentives over the next decade. What a shame. This is fiscal irresponsibility of the highest magnitude. And now, because this board doesn't have the projected revenue it needs, it is taking your rights to cover their failures. This is wrong, and they are not done. They will not stop here. I and many others did not vote for this. We voted for Supervisor Gugino because she had an arbusat, her name, and expected she would follow the Republican creed. Boy, were we wrong. If Culpeper wants to fundamentally transform itself, let it do it via the electoral process. Let Supervisors Gugino, Dur, and Rosenberg make their case directly to the voters and run on fundamentally transforming Culpeper County. If they are re-elected, we can have a thought-out, thoughtful and well-orchestrated transformation and not a mad rush to ram through a poorly thought-out process. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Mike Klosterman, I live in the Rixeville area. My family and I moved here from Hampton Roads and wanted to put our roots here in twenty fifteen, precisely because I saw the sprawl that was happening in, from Richmond all the way down to Hampton Roads. I came here, I love horse country, I don't own any horses, but I love the open atmosphere, I love the space, and I, I, I think there is some serious problems statistically when we don't consider reducing the density. So first off, I am actually for the amendments, and it's, again, purely on, on density, how do we reduce the amount of incoming sprawl? So our current population, fifty-five thousand, just a little over fifty-five thousand, and our population growth from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty-two has experienced a sixteen-point-one increase, which is double, actually, than the whole state of Virginia's growth rate of eight-point-two. Our Culpeper County Fire and EMS has only three-hundred-and-sixty-three active members in eight companies, which covers three-hundred-and-eighty-one square miles. Our law enforcement, we have a hundred-and-sixty-two active, and they're there to, to protect people that occupy nineteen-thousand dwellings and one-thousand-and-seventy-eight establishments. There's only two public high schools in Culpeper. I saw the firsthand experience going to my daughter's high school, Culpeper County High School, on a parent night at one time, and the amount of children in those schools, shoulder to shoulder, is just outrageous. The, the problem is not just the density of housing, but the lack of services. We do not have the infrastructure to support maximizing all these lots, trying to pack as many lots in. Examples like the Stonehaven Development in Amisville or Jefferson, just clear-cutting and, and trying to pack as many houses as you can, which impacts the roads, impacts traffic, impacts, and directly impacts safety. So again, I am for the amendments to try to reduce this and, and keep Culpeper open and supportive of, of people that like the outdoors. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Good evening. My name's Bruce Hegy, spelling my last name is H-E-G-Y-I. My wife and I live in the Cedar Mountain District, where we purchased land back in nineteen ninety-six and built a home. I've been an attorney for over forty years. When I first got out of law school, I was with a big firm in Houston, Texas, and did a lot of condemnation work. I second the quest, the comment of the person that was ahead of me. I haven't a clue how this is not, this does not qualify as a Fifth Amendment taking by the government. It clearly is, you're taking property rights that currently exist, you're the government, and you're going to take those away from, from property owners. My wife and I own five tracts of land down in the Rapid Inn area, we love it, we farm it, we plan to keep doing that, but I don't appreciate the, the government here trying to tell us what we can and can't do with our land. Open space easements, a lot of the property down around us is in open space easements, also called developmental easements, and I applaud the people that do that, it's wonderful that they're doing that, but we've chosen not to do that. There's great value, I mean, they didn't do it as ill-advised individuals, they were able to take off hundreds of thousands of dollars in tax benefits by putting their land in developmental easements. That shows you what happens when you take land that used to be capable of potential subdivisions, and you've now taken it out of that, and so they reserve the right to build three, four, five homes on it, and then they end up reaping hundreds of thousands of dollars in tax benefits from that. And at least one of the entities down in my area that is accepting these open space or developmental easements is also paying cash money for people who are willing to put their property in these open space easements. So I don't see how on earth, you can, the folks, I'm not pointing the finger at anybody here individually, but I don't see how on earth you can defend that this is not a Fifth Amendment taking. And if it is, then you all are gonna get, have to write some awfully big checks to people if you go through with this. And the lawsuits come, the lawsuits are gonna win, and you're gonna end up being responsible for it. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Hi, my name is Peter Bland, and I live in Stevensburg District, off of Bleak Hill Road, which is kind of daunting. I am, in fact, a Realtor, but not a practicing Realtor in Culpeper, I've left that to the local professionals. We come from the Beltway, inside the Beltway, and we picked our property and built on, in two thousand and six, and finally were able to retire to the property in two thousand and fifteen. We've seen the impact up around the Beltway, we've seen the impact on Loudoun County, on eastern Loudoun County. It's, if you ever drive through there, it's almost a picture of what looks like if the supervisors have their way, we will be looking exactly like that. We will have more data centers, we will have mass housing, and we will lose the charm of Culpeper County. There is a charm, it's the reason we're here, it's the reason all these people have spent their lives here, and things have worked. Mr. Kletterbuck is a great builder, he didn't build my house, but he has a great reputation, and he has built a couple houses in my small development. But independent builders don't stand a chance against these big builders, and it's, it's a shame, and the other impact that I see, when you go downtown and you're on a side street, and you have to get in, into the main, main street, people let you in. I don't know whether you realize the influx of the people coming, that's all gonna change. You're not gonna have, you're not gonna have the little wave on, on the side streets, you're not gonna have the charm. I suggest maybe we can support our local merchants a little bit more, but right now, Culpeper is still a charming place to come to, and people do come for the, and increasing amenities. So I don't want to lose that charm, and I believe allowing this, all these amendments and whatnot, it's gonna kill us. And, you know, we'll probably, we stood in the middle of ten acres, we're in a subdivision which we cannot subdivide, so that doesn't affect me, but we do have property behind us, hundred-and-sixty-seven acres, which is landlocked, and the developers are trying very hard to figure out a way to get to the Bleak Hill Road.
Okay, we, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
We let you go, we let you go a little bit longer, but we appreciate it.
The planning, the planning people have been great. I hope the supervisors listen to you, as they haven't on other occasions.
Right. Thank you very much, sir. Next.
Hello, my name's Melissa Anderson. My husband and I own a small construction company in Culpeper, we've been doing it off and on for about thirty years. I'm just echoing what others have said before me, most of them. The, the big builders are the ones that come in, they, they develop these parcels and just build hundreds of houses where, over thirty years, we've built twenty-five or thirty houses, maybe. Some of that's because we took a little hiatus, but our subcontractors are local, we contribute to the local economy, these big builders, they come in, they develop the crap out of things, and they just leave you hanging to deal with the, the, what's left. The influx of kids, they might give some land to build a school on, but then we're stuck with millions of dollars to build those extra schools. Slowing growth with this particular change is not gonna affect them, it's gonna kill us and our subcontractors, it's just gonna take our bread and butter. And some people depend on splitting land for their retirement or to take, give their kids a college education, so just, if y'all could keep that in mind and suggest something different, maybe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next.
My name is James Duckett. I am here speaking for, on behalf of my wife of fifty-five years and our family. We have owned property in Culpeper County for sixty-two years, and the thing is, this zoning, I understand, we have to control growth and zoning, I understand we have to control growth and zoning, but the only way that we can control growth and, and moving forward is to stop our population, and that isn't going to happen. If we develop a plan worldwide that all women abstain from sex and abstain from being pregnant, our zoning problem will take care of itself in about seventy to eighty years. There will be no one left on earth if we, if we're, the women in this country are the main factor.
Order, please.
That we have survived as long as we have, and that we're going to survive in the future. And my, you know, I will relate to innocent in my family. I was born in Fairfax County, lived in Prince William County. We recently sold a tract of land, a hundred-and-eighty acres, in Prince William County. We were restricted to ten-acre lots. The adjacent property to our land had three-acre lots, and the same token, Hilton Enterprises from the early sixties to currently, has probably put a hundred thousand units in the county. Okay? My thought is, the value of our property wasn't anything near what other folks were. The thing is, I ask the board and whomever to put, take into consideration that this new moratorium or whatever should be brought down to as low as one acre existing home sites or homes in the county, because if we don't, developers will come in and buy old houses, tear them down, and build us a bunch of apartments and townhouses, which we do not need. And I feel, you know, I ask the board and all the folks involved in it to use deep thought and moral conviction on coming up with their agenda. I thank you folks, everyone's involved in this venture, time and effort for what they've done for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next?
All right. Sarah Parmley, representing the Piedmont Environmental Council. For every one dollar Culpeper receives in tax revenue from working in open land, or working in open land requires only thirty-two cents in services, while residential lands require a dollar twenty-two in services. Culpeper County has grown by almost nineteen percent since 2010, that population jumping significantly between 2020 and 2023. We are one of the cheapest counties to live in, and that is still commutable to Northern Virginia and DC, as well as Fredericksburg and Charlottesville. Residential pressure from these metropolitan, metropolitan areas is not going to decrease anytime soon. The more people you have, the more services you need, and the more the county must spend to provide those services, which leads to higher taxes. Providing services, providing, hello? Okay. Providing services like school buses, fire and EMS, and law enforcement outside of urban areas is also exponentially more expensive and serves fewer people. This is why we encourage Culpeper to concentrate inevitable growth where the county can best handle it, which is around town. Residential development in rural areas can also have social impacts. New homeowners don't always understand the importance of spreading manure, harvesting trees, or hunting. They often want more services, like trash pickup or community water and sewer, services that Culpeper may not be equipped to provide. We're also seeing increased traffic on rural roads, making it more dangerous to move farm equipment and livestock, or even check the mail. Reducing density in rural areas will help keep these problems from getting worse. We understand that there are concerns that some might not be able to subdivide their land under this new language. We encourage them to apply for their subdivisions now so that they can be grandfathered into the existing standards. We see this amendment as ensuring that Culpeper maintains a predominantly rural land base, which is not only key to Culpeper's identity, but also why our taxes have been able to stay as low as they have been despite our population's continued growth. We ask that you recommend this amendment for approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm from the Catalpa District. I do not agree with their approach, as in my view, it negatively impacts many farmers and folks living in residential areas that count on the ability to subdivide their property to generate funds needed for farming operations, provide affordable residential opportunities for family members, and contribute to their retirement plans. The proposed amendments are a downzoning that will result in a loss of development rights for Culpeper County property owners. Property owners that had intended to subdivide under the current rules will face severe restrictions or not be able to subdivide at all. To me, the increase in the minimum lot size is a form of taking economic value from the property owners. These changes will have a big impact on smaller landowners, specifically those with twenty acres or less, who will lose nearly all minor development potential on their land. For many years, the property owners have assumed this, that this ability to subdivide the property and make financial plans for their families based on this right was safe and secure. Property owners have been paying taxes for years and sometimes generations based on the value of the land, which has assumed the right for divide the property based on the current lot sizes. At the same time, the county is trying to restrict minor divisions, which impact smaller property owners the most. They are trying to increase density allowed in major rezonings, a much larger contributor to growth throughout the county. This favors large out-of-town builders and negatively impacts the local contractors who live and spend money within the county. Why the sudden concern over the slowing down growth in the county? It does not seem to be out of control and concerning how fast other counties are growing. Culpeper County seems about average, given how close we are in proximity to Washington, DC, and Northern Virginia. By the county's own data, minor divisions are not a significant contributor to development, averaging only about forty a year. Now, this is just subdivided, this is not building, this is just subdivided property. Why are the farmers and rural residents being painted as bad guys in discussion? For many years, the property owners have assumed that this ability to subdivide the property and make financial plans for their families based on this right were safe and secure. They are only trying to provide for their families using their own resources and not are asking for a handout from the county. If the county forces this change on property owners, how are they gonna compensate us for the loss in economic value of the property? Are they gonna give us a check, tax rebate, or what? All that has to be considered. If the county shuts down all residential growth, where will the young people and new families in our community live? You're pricing them out of the market and forcing them to move from Culpeper. Just look at the lack of new and existing housing for the sale in county, and how the average price of a home has increased. It is something we all understand, supply and demand, and when the board cuts off the supply of homes, what do you think happens to the price of the home? If you can even afford one? I would challenge the supervisors and planning commission to come up with a better solution than what is proposed. It is a complicated issue, and this seems like an overly simple solution. We deserve a better solution from all the Culpeper families. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next?
Hello. My name is Paul Dysart. How much time do I have to speak?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, sorry. Thank you. So I moved to this county about fifteen years ago with my wife, and we bought a small house, and then recently we've been in Brandy Station for a little while, but I wanted to give a, a real-life example of how this zoning could have negative impacts on young families. I'm not as young as I used to be anymore, but I have four kids and completely...
Sir, if you turn to the mic and, and present it to us...
So I wanted to give a real-life example of how these new regulations, if you will, could have negative impacts on young families. I've got four kids. My son is over here. He's twelve years old, and I wanted to bring him just so he could see how this type of thing happens when the county is thinking about doing things that definitely does impact everyone here in this room. We, me and my wife had a dream of buying some land, and we saw some for sale, and the second gentleman that spoke, Gregory Smith, had some land for sale, and we ended up buying it from him. And come to find out the, the backstory, if, if you don't mind if I, if I, if I speak on that, his wife had gotten sick, and he had land, and he was able to subdivide it, and I was fortunate enough to buy some, but he was using that money to help care for his wife, and what an honorable thing to do. And if he didn't have the ability to do that, to actually subdivide his land, he might not have been able to take care for his wife the best he could. And if you think about it, we should have those rights to be able to use our land if we need, God forbid if something were to happen and we need to cash out some of that, we need to be able to rely on the county to have regular, we can't just change stuff on us like that. Imagine if that, if this change had happened five years ago, the story that I'm telling would be quite different. And so what I would say to the board and everyone here is that we, we all don't want to look like Northern Virginia, where there's city streets on every single possible area, right? But there's a way to go about growth, and there's a way to also not go about taking land rights. And this is just an example that it could have gone the other way. Imagine if this stuff goes through, and the next story will be that somebody needs to divide their land, and that's all they've got, and they can't do it because these regulations pass, and now we've got land that's worth a lot less, or nothing at all, and we want to cash out on it, we can't do it. And what are we gonna do? Just allow our loved one who got sick to just, what do we, what, what can we do if our land's not worth anything? So...
Okay.
I appreciate the, the opportunity to speak, and I just wanted to give a real-life example. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Next?
Good evening. My name's A.J. Pullen. This is my daughter Reagan Pullen. We've been farming off of Dutch Hollow Road for four generations. We run four hundred mama cows. We row crop about five hundred acres, and we sell quite a bit of horse hay into the equine market. Whether or not you like this plan, we've got a crisis, and that is, we're losing two million acres of farmland a year. And there's somebody's gonna have to sacrifice. I don't know who it is, but somebody will. Now, whether it's our grandchildren that won't get to eat, or whether it's no clothes or what happens, while we all sit here worrying about whether we lose a few dollars on a development rights, there's gonna come a time that we'd have said we wish we'd have done something. And the time's here. Now, whether this is the right plan or not, I'm not smart enough to tell you, but the scary fact is, the farmland's going away. And I hope my daughter gets to farm the land the same way I did. There's other options. We can sell this farmland to be farmland. It doesn't have to be houses. There's a lot of young people in this area that would like to get into agriculture that can't afford to do it because we can't compete with, you know, the builders. So, you know, as we all sit back here and everybody's mad that they might not be able to put another development or another house or make a little extra money, sometimes you gotta do what's right. And if you've farmed your whole life and you haven't made enough to retire, I'm sorry, but dividing your farmland's a poor decision. If you've ran your, any business and you haven't done good enough at the end to retire, I don't think farmland should become a subdivision at that point because you didn't do your job. So those are my takes on it. I know this is a very controversial subject, but at the same time, I think it's a conversation that has to be had. You gotta start somewhere. So, thank y'all.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Doug Florrie. I've been a resident of the Jeffersonton area for going on forty-five years, and I want to share a story with everybody here tonight to hopefully help with this situation. It's a story about a fifty-three-acre parcel of land that is adjacent to our farm. It's zoned RA, has been productive farmland for many years. And about eight years ago, a gentleman from outside of the county, not a resident of Culpeper County, bought the property. And he explained to us in the neighborhood that he looked forward to being a part of our neighborhood, and he was gonna build his forever family compound there. And he used the existing administrative subdivision code and the existing family division code, and he created nine lots, and he built seven houses. Today, eight years later, he has sold all those homes, and he's left. What this has done is it eliminated fifty-three acres of productive cropland, and it left a burden on the county to provide services for those homes, none of which will be paid for out of the substantial profits that he earned and took with him. Unfortunately, this incident has repeated multiple times in the county. See Orchard Hill, see Calvin Road, see others. So although this is a, is an emotional and a tough, a tough nut to crack, we applaud and strongly support your efforts to correct this deficiency through the amendments to Articles Three and Four, with the exception of two changes we humbly recommend. Number one being that clustering has no place on land zoned A1, and it is not in compliance with the comprehensive plan's efforts to protect farmland. We have seen repeatedly situations where conflicts arise between the clustered homes and the use of the open space. Number two, the time required for subsequent or additional subdivision through the administrative process should be increased from five years to a minimum of ten years. This would still allow existing landowners to cut off a piece of the farm for the kid, and with adequate planning, could allow multiple divisions. The point is that we have to disincentivize these outside opportunists. My wife said it would be politically incorrect to use the term carpetbaggers, but we must disincentivize these outside opportunists from leapfrogging over adjacent counties to reap the low-hanging fruit that is ours in Culpeper County. We know, statistically proven, historically proven, that if you continue on the current plan, you're gonna have more traffic, you're gonna have more schools, you're gonna have more strain on our emergency services, you will have the continued erosion of our vibrant agricultural economy in Culpeper, and indisputably, without a doubt, we, the citizens of Culpeper County, will have higher taxes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Next?
My name is Al Caldwell, and I'm a farmer. My family owns land, mostly in the Salem District. It's both A1 and RA zoning. I read the comprehensive plan when it was drafted and before it was approved, and I've reviewed it again recently, and it does not say that there's a desire to downzone. And it does not say that there's a desire to downzone. You know, who would have thought that ambiguous language would be put in the plan that could later be used as a predicate to propose the downzoning? I've analyzed our property and I've found that it would reduce our, our division rights by seven. So if, if this plan approves, you know, poof, they're gone and, and our property is worthless. And I agree with the former speaker that I think this would be a, a taking by the government of something that is of value and it's a lot of value. And if, if I got into a situation where I needed to sell property or, or borrow money, use it as collateral, then the value would be less. And I've been to several meetings about this subject and I've never heard a word of discussion about a way to compensate the, the property owners whose property would be devalued. And you know, if you go down this road, then maybe that's something that should be addressed. So as you can tell, I'm opposed to the proposal. I think there've been many thoughtful reasons given on both sides and I ask that you listen to your constituents and, and reject the, the plan. But however, I am in favor of clustering. And the reason is I think this is a way that we can preserve agricultural land and, and it wouldn't take the property rights of landowners. And I can give you an example. Back in the 1980s, there was a dairy farm about two miles west of town and it went out of business. And my father-in-law rented the property and incorporated it as part of his Angus cattle operation. And so we farmed it, excuse me, we farmed it and it was mostly pasture. We grew some corn on it. And in the late 80s, the property changed hands. It was sold. The new owner divided it into 56 lots. That's 312 acres went to 56 lots. And people, the houses were built in early 2000s. Previous speaker here built the houses, very nice houses. But many, if not most of the houses have changed hands two or three times now. And in talking to these people who sort of became neighbors, they all say it's too much land for one lot, five acres. They, they mow, you know, mow five acres and it's just too much. And, and so I've often thought that those 56 houses could be put-
We, we, we'll have to have you come to a close, okay?
I'll close it out. 56, 56 houses could be put on 75 to 100 acres in one end and leave 200 acres with the same density. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next.
Good evening, Culpeper Plan and Commission. My name is Candace Myers and I am a landowner in Culpeper County. I support these amendments that the commission has put forward, but at this time, Mr. Chairman, I would like to yield the remainder of my time to my son, Matthew Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Plan and Commission. Good evening, Board of Supervisors that are tuning in and my fellow neighbors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I want to thank you for bringing these proposed amendments before us. These changes are vital to preserving the character of Culpeper County and protecting the future of our community. As I said, my name is Matthew Myers, a born and raised lifelong Culpeper citizen. I'm currently employed by an organization that represents nearly 6 million farm and ranch families across this great nation in Washington, DC. But I'm here tonight for personal concerns over the direction of our community. First off, I'm a multi-generation Virginian who has deep ties, love and respect for this community and county. My grandparents, parents, aunts and uncles walked the very halls that I did at Culpeper County High School. In my short 24 years of life, I have seen the augmentation and congestion of developments in corporate box stores. I can recall when there were soccer and baseball fields for children and my classmates to play where Martin's, Dick's and Target sits now. I can recall when the roundabouts were the talk of the community and if you can believe it, I remember the flashing caution yellow light that hung over the top of the intersection at Rixeyville Road 229 and Chestnut Pork Road. During my time away at college during 2019 to 2022, I came home and saw Culpeper looking less and less like the place I knew. Where there were once soybean and cornfields, there are now solar panels. Where there were once wheat fields, housing developments. The quiet and quaint home that I left looks more and more like a Fairfax County suburb each day. The quiet rural town I grew up in is increasingly being replaced by suburban sprawl and many of our new neighbors moved here precisely for that reason, to escape it, seeking the peace and space that Culpeper provides. They came for the opportunity to live in a small town that still feels connected to the land and we should do everything we can to protect that. As someone who works in agriculture advocacy, I can tell you that this isn't just a local issue, it's a national issue, one across the United States. We're losing millions of farmland acres per year. From 2017 to 2021, we lost 20.1 million acres of farmland. That's the equivalent to the size of state of Maine. During that same time period, the Commonwealth of Virginia lost 500,000 acres. That's just under the size of Rhode Island or two and a half Culpeper counties. Some argue that these proposed changes are on an overreach by the government claiming that they infringe our property rights, but the truth is the unchecked development of our rural areas will untimely strip us of those very freedoms we seek to protect. If we don't, don't take control and carefully review our growth now, we'll soon find ourselves living in a community defined by higher property taxes, homeowners associations, overbearing developers and the conglomerate of corporations from Wall Street. The real property threats are not these amendments, but the uncontrolled expansion that will force us to give up our local identity in exchange for suburban and urban sprawl. Others argue that these proposed changes undermines farmers' investments by preventing them from subdividing their land. I strongly disagree. I talk to farmers from all across this great country and I don't know a one that hopes to subdivide their land. They hope to keep it intact and farming for the next generation. Subdividing a farm is not an investment. It's a destruction of the very livelihood and heritage that families like mine have worked to build over decades. The truth is farmers are not just landowners, they're stewards of the land, working every day to ensure that they can provide for the generations to come. The long-term goal for any real farmer isn't to cash out and sell off the parcels of their property, it's to keep it in operation sustainable, intact and maintain the legacy of hard work and responsibility. These zoning changes are not about limiting property rights, they're about protecting the property rights of our farmers and preserving our rural identity for the next generation. If we allow unchecked development, we lose risking that legacy entirely. In conclusion, I ask you to consider the future of this community that we all love. The proposed zoning amendments are not about restricting property rights, they're about preserving the character and the quality of life that we all cherish in Culpeper County. So I hope you will vote in favor of these and pass them along to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for your time and considering the future of this county.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Good evening, Culpeper friends. I'm D.J. Moberly of the Stevensonburg District and I wanted to share a few thoughts that I have with you all. First of all, 12,691 homes. That's how many houses currently exist in the county, 12,691. These particular zoning classifications and the minor subdivisions that we're talking about, on average, in the last 30 years, only create 50 per year. So in the upcoming year, when the aver, if the average holds true, now there's been a little bit of a housing burst, boom, there will be a burst, there's cycles here, right? But on average, 50 per year. That means in the upcoming year, we're talking about one-third of 1% of the entire county residents, that's how much is adding to it. So what we're discussing right now is not impacting the big picture very much. Mr. Sam, who does an amazing job, has shared that if they pass this, he's projecting a 30% reduction, which means that the average would not be 50, it would be 35. So you're taking 15 houses per year potentially off the horizon. Do you think that that's changing the big picture? Is that changing the big picture? I would say it's not. Currently on the docket right now is a 740 home building project in the county, 740 houses by Ryan Holmes. So this is, in my opinion, a little bit of a distraction. A couple of other things I want to share with you and obviously I get a little broken up because I'm passionate about this subject, please forgive me. I'm also a local home builder, like Anthony, just building a few houses for some special clients as we go by. We're not, we're, you know, you think of the builders out there trying to pillage, we're not, we're not pillaging. We don't even have land for the clients that come to us. He can account for that. It's very, very difficult. Saving farmland is important. We, I want to save farmland. We're not out here trying to take farmland, but if you want to save farmland, this is not going to do it. Create a zoning classification that gives an incentive financially to farmers to put a big farm, a production farm in a farm, in a farm zoning classification. That'll save farmland. This, this is not going to save farmland. I promise you it will not. It will drive prices up, it will make homes less affordable. So that's kind of the heartbeat of what I wanted to share. One last thing is like, a scripture that I love is, without a vision, the people perish. And the comprehensive plan is what guides all this and they want to preserve the rural nature and the agricultural nature of the, of Culpeper County, but the plan here, in my opinion, doesn't really figure out how to do that. Figure out a way to save farms, I support that, this doesn't do it. That's what I have to say, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good evening. My name is Angela Moberly. I'm his other half and I had to follow up with that. So I'm not going to be as good, I'm sorry. Thank you, everyone that came tonight and thank you to the Planning Commission, zoning, Sam McLaren, Morgan are awesome. So I want to start off, and this wasn't something I intended to say, but it's a, a word that's been said multiple times. The word is lost. So I'm going to define that for you guys. According to Oxford, the word lost means that it cannot be recovered and it's been taken away. So that begs to question, who is taking the farmland? Is it being taken or is it being sold? Those are two differing concepts. I'm not out here to dispute selling farmland, selling farmland, purchasing farmland, or I'm not telling farmers how to farm. I love farms. I personally am a homesteader and I love homesteaders. We all can't be a homesteader, we all can't be a farmer. And there's different grades of farming, as I found out. To, to lose something means something's been taken from you, not willingly given. And I'm not here to argue or debate, sorry, argue or debate why a farmer would sell or subdivide his property that's within his bounds and rights is what, what we're talking about over here. Or why a farmer shouldn't do this and why they should keep and maintain their farm and if they're less of a farmer because they choose to parcel their property and sell off lots. I don't think that's kind and I don't think that's neighborly. And it's definitely not something Culpeper, it's definitely, sorry, definitely not something Culpeper, the Culpeper I grew up in did. So my, I'm going to use the rest of my time to suggest maybe farmers could come up with a creative way to maintain their farms as farms. Sell it to a farmer. Don't sell it to a developer. It seems so simple, but if that's your desire, where there's a, where there's a will, there's a way, right? So we got to think outside of the box. That's all I wanted to say. So thank you. And I oppose this, by the way, in case anyone-
Thank you very much.
-had any question. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll get that rolling.
Good evening. I'm Ben Salmon. I'm from the Rixeyville District and I oppose the proposed changes that we're discussing this evening. There's an old adage, perhaps from antiquity, that good and well-ordered development is not going to corrupt what came before. And now I live just off of 211 and every day I drive by Clevenger's Corner. That vapid, soulless development that is so uncharacteristic of this county and quite frankly, the rest of this Commonwealth, that sort of thing belongs in Northern Virginia. That's the sort of thing I escaped coming out here a couple of years ago. I don't want to see it on every corner. So to get the letter in the mail that says, well, you might have trouble splitting your land in half so that your aging parents can build a cottage on part of it, tells me that it does not coincide with this comprehensive plan of managing growth. There's a contradiction there and I see it every time I drive past that little patch of wasteland at Clevenger's Corner. Seems to me instead that this is a rezoning issue, kind of what the, the previous speaker said. So it's a matter of when these sales and these transactions, these lands change hands, there is a conscious decision made that we are not just going to turn it over to Ryan Holmes or Lennar or the like. There is other, there are other ways to do this. I think that these proposed changes are simply a, a distraction was the word used previously, to make it look like we're doing something, to say that we care about preserving Culpeper County and managing the growth. But instead I feel, I, I'm concerned that the rural cluster concept just creates yet another avenue for the big developers to come in and then it also just makes life that much harder and more expensive for the little guy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Scott Morse. I grew up on a farm that's been in my family since the mid 1800s in the county, a little south of here, that still is, that my dad still farms. Now, one of the things that the, the, the young man who brought his daughter up and the, the 24-year-old who made his commercial up here spoke about, don't focus on is why farms fall apart. It's through generational loss. It's because kids don't farm, they don't maintain that same lifestyle and someone has to pass those things along. So while I do admire their, their chutzpah for what they're doing, it doesn't get to the overall problem. The gentleman who talked about the 53 acres in his view shed that he didn't like, because why, why didn't you buy it, sir? Why didn't you buy it if you wanted to maintain it? Well, they're, good for you. I'm proud of you. Thank you very much. That doesn't take away, that doesn't give you the ability to take away someone else's rights and what they can do with their land. And that's a big part of what this is all about. D.J. talked to them on, on the fact that 50 units per year out of 12,000 is one-third of 1% of overall growth. The big things come from Clevenger's Corner. We're, we're making, there are parts of what we're doing because, that have made ourselves a bedroom community to outside. And these developers talk about adding some commercial projects inside of these developments in order to grow the tax base from what they're doing, but often they don't follow through on that. So we never see that, but a lot of times that's not a functional use of the commercial space that they even bring in because people shop for convenience. So when these big units go in, these people work in Northern Virginia, they work in Fredericksburg, they travel to Charlottesville, that's where they buy their groceries. That's where a lot of that money, even when they create these big developments, don't come back to the county. You know what does come back to the county? When someone were to be able to break off, say, one, two or three acre parcels, maintain the overall value and integrity of the land, keep that inside the county, those people who buy those one, three and five acre parcels will shop in the county. They are more connected to the county. And that's something to think about with overall growth and how you view this entire project. So while some of these thoughts are very admirable and emotional, human behavior dictates we're going to continue to grow and we need to do it in a way that is sustainable. I like the fact that the gentleman talked about how five- I like the fact that the gentleman talked about how five acre lots were too big. Is that my time?
No, just directing everything to us. Okay.
Five acre lots may be too big for someone, but that doesn't mean that 10 acre lots, you're deep, you are devaluing the farmer's ability to sell their land, should they choose to. And whether that's a loss of farmland, or, and what the big emotions involved in that are, aren't as important as really generating the right type of growth. If we could, clustering isn't a bad idea, but if we were to go to one to three acre lots and clustering in some of these developments, you still have to think about what's going to be done with that other 100 acres of land that's going to be sitting vacant. Is there going to be, you know, just to sit it vacant, you're not getting anything out of that either. I got a little off track there with the, the time thing, but other than that, have a good evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, sir.
Hi, my name is Eric Thompson. I'm from the Jeffersonton District. This is my second time in two weeks standing before you find people. Having lived in Alabama for the majority of my life and never having to go to a planning commission, I'm kind of disturbed that I'm having to come up here twice to talk about rights being infringed upon. I will throw a question out there, and since we can't get answers here, which I'm kind of confused about, considering I thought that would be something we would address here, so that multiple people with the same question can get the same answer at the same time. Well, how did all this start? I know it came down from the Board of Supervisors, but what was the purpose of even studying this? Was it really to reduce sprawl? Was it really to do other things? I would love to see the actual answer to that. I come from a fifth-generation dairy farmer. My grandfather was the first dairy farm to put milk on a refrigerated unit in grocery store shelves. We kept that farm until my mother could not do it. And so I was too little at the time my grandfather died. That's why we sold the land. I will tell you, growing up in a farming family, nobody sells the land because they plan to invest. People sell farmland because they're caught between a rock and a hard place, and it is a safety net. So this small little group of people who are having to divide off land should never have, this should never have come up. If you want to reduce strain on this county, you stop the subdivisions. You shouldn't have Clevenger's monstrosity coming up anywhere else. It disturbs me to hear that we're talking about a 700-home subdivision somewhere. That should never make it past the application phase for you guys, if you're truly trying to adhere, adhere to this comprehensive plan, which I read. And I think it's fine and dandy that you guys put this out there. I don't think you're adhering to it in any shape, form, or way, nor is the Board of Supervisors. So yeah, I'm against this plan, of course, the board. I came a little bit better prepared, and my phone went to sleep. Sorry about that. I came here to live in the country. I moved around a lot, lived in New York City, moved, was living in Northern Virginia. I moved here because I wanted to live in the country. I wanted to be away from the urban sprawl. And part of living out here is that the government doesn't try to change the rules. We bought the land with a certain level of expectation, with the rule when I bought my land. And if you're going to change the rules on me now, yeah, it's a taking, and it's a damage that you've done, and you should make good on it, across the board. Now, I would like to take a step back and talk about one other quick thing right now, and that's about integrity. I think you all should look very carefully at how you are handling yourselves, primarily around the fact that you are not making comments and letting us know your thoughts on this at this meeting tonight. You guys report to us. We elected you, and we want to know your thoughts.
Okay, sir.
By not talking about that is a problem.
All right, sir. Next.
Hi, my name is Leslie Gerard, and I just decided to stand up today. I think there's a big difference between the 200-acre farm owners and the, those of us, me personally, I'll just speak for myself, that is in the 10, 20, 25-acre range. And we have a piece of property that maybe we want to future subdivide for a family member, a child, or children. And I don't want to create a fake subdivision now, fearing that I might miss the opportunity to do it in the future. And I don't want to spend thousands of dollars to have it surveyed and figured out and pay permits and this and that. So I wonder if there's a way that this, the county could consider grandfathering people who might have an intention but aren't ready to, like, make that happen today. I got a notice a month ago, and for me to make a spur-of-the-moment decision on how to subdivide my land in case I want to have something future for a family member is kind of crazy. So I just wanted to speak for the smaller owner here, and I just don't want to miss an opportunity by rushing into something that would be, I'm not ready for yet, so. And, or maybe you could give us a year after you make a change to still grandfather under the old clause, so that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Could everyone have a seat, please, except the ones who are going to be speaking? All right? If the deputies will just make sure that everyone is seated. If you're going to go outside or back, that's, out front, that's fine, but, okay? And we can close the door if we have to. All right? Next, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sean Miller. I'm here as a representative of the Fredericksburg Builders Association, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of our members, many of whom live, work, and employ local tradesmen here in Culpeper County.
Could you hold, hold, could you hold on, please, a sec? Sir, would you please have a seat? Is plenty of seats in? Could you please have a, have a seat?
Under what rule do I have to be seated?
Or you be removed.
How? What am I doing that's standing here?
Sir, we want everyone to have a seat here.
Under what rule?
Okay. Oh, you just go, go to the back, sir, just so that we can, all right? Okay, go ahead. Continue.
Hi, again, my name is Sean Miller. I'm here as a representative of the Fredericksburg Builders Association. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of our members who live, work, and employ local tradesmen here in Culpeper County. It's our understanding that this ordinance before you will require clustering in RA and A1 zone land, but will also allow an option for time-based zoning. Faba believes this option will preserve the rural aesthetic of the county, allow for lot flexibility, open space, while maintaining current densities, so we support this aspect of the amendments. However, we would ask the Planning Commission to refrain from increasing the minimum acreage requirements, as this would limit the rights of landowners to subdivide and create an obstacle to the creation of affordable housing here in Culpeper County. We would like to thank the Planning Commission and staff for their hard work crafting these amendments, and we look forward to working with you for, going forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I am Wanda Breeden Cutright. My family's goes back to the 1700s of both of my mother's and father's side in Culpeper County. And my family's farm, I, I grew up on a chicken farm. We, we had 4,000 chickens and, and sold eggs. But I don't want to sell my farmland that, that had been my parents'. But if I needed to sell a lot or two, like in the A1, under the present ruling, I could sell three acres. Because you could build a house on it, that would be worth $80,000. And, you know, plus the land, the lot would bring over $100,000. But if you change it, and I have to sell six acres, it's still going to bring just a, maybe 10,000, 10 or 20,000 more. So I'm not really getting money for that second three acres. But the problem is, I'm selling more land, and it's farmland I don't want to sell. But if I needed the money, and in, in the A1 zone, if I sold a five acre lot, I don't know what, but it would bring maybe 130,000. But a 10 acre lot is not going to bring much more. And so you're forcing me to sell more farmland instead of, you know, less. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Good evening. My name is Sean Caulfield. I live in Brandy Station, and I've been here all of three months. I don't have the community, the culture that you guys cherish, but that's what attracted me to come here. In 2003, I moved from Fairfax Station to a planned community, one that my wife found. She said it was perfect. We had a half acre, we had a 50-acre tree save right behind our property, and everything seemed perfect. I missed a couple of these meetings. One of those key meetings, they made some zone changes. I lived in Ashburn until three months ago. What moved behind me was a place called Brambleton. The community that I saw in 2003 looked like you. Anybody been to Ashburn lately? It doesn't look anything like this at all. And you should really do the research on how it impacts you. The community has completely changed. There were opportunities to buy and sell. I'm not discouraging that. I think you should let these people do what they want, as they have been able to do, and allow them to protect their investments. If you don't, people will come in, there will be big buyers. Those big communities that you talked about, those subdivisions, will come in. They did. We went from when I was there, there were 30 homes. There's 10,000 there now. You guys, you don't get the wave. You're never going to see that wave in Ashburn. I can't tell you how happy I've been coming here. The interaction that I've had, I've visited many of the, I mean, we did a lot of research in moving out here. The culture, the restaurants. We support the small business. We are a small business. I don't want to sell my property. I did buy a large plot of land. I'm not a farmer. But I recognize what will happen to your community if you let this happen. This will be a slope that you will not recover from. And people will say, "Ashburn has the greatest, greatest school districts in the world." They do. I have several people who work for me who have come in from the country of India that have intentionally targeted Ashburn because of the best school districts in the world. And they are. But those builders paid for those schools, and it sounds like that's not happening here now. When a builder comes in, you encourage them to pay for your schools when you plan your growth. But recognize the slope that you're going to, you're going to get there. It's going to happen in time. It took it 20 years for me to have to move out to the community that I wanted to be in when I first moved there. My wife and I are from Missouri. It was very conservative. I understand and respect my time, but I want you all to recognize what could happen if you allow this change to occur. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
My name is Edwin Cutright. I live out in Reva. My wife, Wanda Breeden Cutright, just spoke a couple minutes ago about some issues. We, she's inherited the residue of her, her parents' estate, and we have a 25-acre approximate piece of property. I'm now 76 years old, and I've noticed I'm not getting younger. It may be that my wife would like to sell part of our piece of land at some point where she would have need. If the issue in putting this thing, this proposal forward is to stop growth, and you say, "Well, right now, we can't sell but two lots off of our 25-acre piece of land in five years." Well, 76, you can do the math. How many five years' do you think I have left? And am I going to build a massive thing that's going, if I took my whole piece of property and cut it up, you know, and if you forced me to go from three acres to six acres, all you're going to do is increase the size of the lots that we would sell. So we'd sell four lots instead of, I'm going to do the math here, instead of eight, then we just make less money, and people get stuck with a little bit bigger lots that they can't mow anyway. So, I mean, the proposal is absurd. At its core, you're targeting a small group of people with small amounts of land, when the problem is, you, the powers that be here have allowed multitudes of huge housing developments. I confronted the supervisor, who was a prime mover behind this, one day in a conversation at church offline, and she said, "Well, I can't do anything about that. That's in the town." Well, what's in the town? When you're driving your car through Culpeper, do you notice whether the other cars are resonant, is this going to work? Are resident in the town or the county? No. You just know the place is crowded, starting to look like Fairfax County. I mean, or Spotsylvania, or some, or, or some other place like that. So the issue is, and the monstrosity of Clevenger's Corner has been pointed out, but it's such a, it's like the elephant in the room. What in the world was anybody thinking who allowed that development to take place? I mean, that is insane. I mean, it's like, duh, I've got, I've got six zillion Cracker Box Mac mansions there, frame atrocities, and where are they? They're next to Warrenton. Do you think they're going to come down to Culpeper to shop? Do you think they're going to contribute anything to Culpeper's economy? That supervisor told me, I said, "Well, we like the idea of homesteading. There may be some people who just want three acres or five acres. They want a nice place for the kids. They don't want to be corralled into some little Cracker Box in a neighborhood that's got one road in, and that's the only road out, where the government can completely control you. So we implement United Nations Agenda 2030 here." When people are saying, "Well, we'll put everybody packed in together, and then we can control them." And that's the real motive here.
Okay, sir.
The thing is, eminent domain is being violated if you pursue this. You've taken value for some people's land, and some people are eventually going to go to court because you took something that wasn't yours.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next. Yes.
Hi, I'm Mike Bremel. We have some property off, I have some property off of Scots Mill Road. I do want to apologize. I have chronic acid reflux, and I'll clear my throat quite a few times during this. I didn't really plan on speaking tonight, and, you know, when I, I hear this, you know, in addition to the things that have happened over the years with the white hair and everything, you know, I've been to the Orange County, something happened similar to this, and actually went to that meeting. And what keeps popping in my mind right now, I see an older gentleman sobbing in a wheelchair after this, saying they changed the rules on me. I'll never forget that. There are, there are rules. People bought property based on rules. So how do you make this work? We have people here who want to preserve farmland, people who want to protect their investment. How do you make this work? It could work. I think there's got to be some sort of group that comes together to figure this out. And it can't be secret. There can't be certain people who have certain incentives versus others. It's got to be out in the open. An answer, a time like a gentleman before suggested would be, I think, not only appropriate, probably required. You know, I don't know, I'm just sort of rambling here, but, you know, keep the same rules you have now, but make it financially, give some incentives to do a cluster, so you do have some open space. But don't, people asked about, you know, some sort of payback. Well, keep the same rules, but make it, make, give incentives for that landowner to have to do a cluster. Don't make it so hard with the roads and the developmental infrastructure that's... Don't make it so hard with the roads and the developmental infrastructure that's, doesn't work. The devil's in the details. So everyone here needs to know the details. The devil's in the details, and no one here really knows the details. And that's where we have to have a back and forth between us. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
My name's Raymond Bender, and I think most of y'all know I'm a landowner here in Culpeper. And I oppose the proposition, first of all, because I feel like it takes away rights, additional, it takes away additional rights of homeowners, property owners, first of all. And then, secondly, my, my son is a builder, and I kind of echo some of the other, I guess, the whole thing with Clevenger's Corner, large builders like Ryan Holmes are able to come in and make a lot of money and build, small builders like my son who are just starting up, well, they can't compete with that. And I feel like this proposal would just do a lot to, to make that situation worse, is the way I feel about it, because it would end up making that property more expensive if you want to buy small properties and build on it. It's gonna make that even more difficult. I have seven children, two of them right now are actively trying to buy land in Culpeper to build houses. I think it's just kind of a known factor with supply and demand. If this proposal went into effect, it's of course going to decrease the supply. And, and as you decrease the supply, it's gonna, the prices are only going to get higher. And I think we all know, everybody's already, we're already dealing with house, housing prices being way too high. So I think we'll only make that part of it worse. And I should have done better research, but somebody gave me a paper in the front, and the paper says that we have data that proves only about 28 landowners choose to subdivide land every year. And it seems like I might have heard somebody else say it was like 40 subdivisions in a year. And I'm like, to me, that's a very small amount compared to Clevenger's Corner and the building projects you see on Long Route 29. So I'm like, I don't really see how this is going to do a whole lot to preserve farmland or the whole situation of rural sprawl. I don't think it's that, that, that big of a problem according to that. I happen to know Wanda Cutright a little bit, so I wanted to thank her for saying that. Seems like making lot sizes bigger is logically only going to destroy more farmland in, in my opinion. Thank you.
My name is Mick Warshaw. I live in Rixeville. We've heard quite a bit of testimony here this evening from the property owners of Culpeper, and it seems like we agree on several things. This plan has no provision for water and sewer. The only provision for road improvements is that landowners have to pay for it themselves. It will clearly encourage large builders like Ryan Holmes. Ryan Holmes is the Yugo of home builders. They build trash products. We should not be encouraging that to come into our county. Additionally, everybody is in agreement that this is going to raise taxes for everyone here. Everyone is in agreement that this is going to raise costs for everyone here, while also simultaneously not allowing them to extract full value from the property they already own. It's become very clear in hearing all of this that this is a poorly thought out plan and absolutely cannot be implemented on the face of it, in addition to the potential legal pitfalls, as pointed out by some of the other speakers. Clearly, the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors should be to not move forward with this plan based on the extremely poorly thought out details of the plan itself. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Jack Fraser. My family and I live in the Cedar Mountain District. I just gotta make one point before I get started, and what I gotta say is that the Board of Supervisors must have had something to do with the design of this system in here tonight, because only about, we're sitting right there and we can't even hear what's going on here. So I just feel like the Board of Supervisors had something to do with the sound system because it sucks just like they do. The problem here that we have is real simple. This form of zoning does not work for this county. We've got to go to smaller lots. You can't use these big 10 acre tracts and think that you want to put a house on it. It just does not work. The other main problem that we have is the disconnect between the county and the town. The town has no responsibility as far as the schools are concerned. The county, the taxpayers in the county have that responsibility. So there's where the disconnect is. Right now, in the town of Culpeper, there's 1,000 lots approved in the town of Culpeper. Now, these few lots, these 30 or 40 lots that are rezoned every year for local builders, well, you know, the thing of it is, local builders are a backbone of this county. They, I've been a builder and I've been in this county all my life. My wife and I was born and raised here. Local builders do not contribute to the problem. We contribute to the responsibility of paying our taxes, doing everything that's right in this county. But the disconnect is between the town and the county. We've got to make, that's where, that's where the rubber hits the road here. If we don't fix that, we're going to continue to have the problems that we have. Schools, there's three schools. There's two at least right now that needs to be, one needs to be renovated, cover, middle school needs to be renovated, we need a new elementary school. And that could possibly be three. So the thing of it is, if it keeps on, if it absolutely keeps on, we're going to have to hold on to our pocketbooks because taxes are going to really change here. But this is the issue that we have. The issue that we have is that disconnect. I've said, I know I've said that three times, but there's where it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
How y'all doing this evening? My name is Joey Chappell. I own several pieces of property in Culpeper. We came here in 1985 as newlyweds, so, because that's all we could afford. And I'm just afraid that's going to kill the next generation below me. It's already happened. I'm not going to speak with a couple minutes here. I was just thinking, if you have, on the proposed zoning amendment, if you have 19 and a half acres of land, 500 feet of road fundage, that's, your property would be one house and it'd be a third of a mile deep. Think about that. That's facts. And I'm just, I'm opposed to the, the new, the 10 acre change, the six acre only zone change, but the clustering makes a lot of sense, except I'm not really sure how it was, how well it was explained, what's the minimum lot size to start off with this, with the clustering and the road design issues. But on the whole, this is a road maintenance issue that affects, like you've heard all the builders talk, this is a poor man's issue, not the developer's issue. This is a common man issue. The only people this affects is hairy homeowner who's trying to get ahead in life, not developers. That's a joke. And you've heard more people say, this is only 40, 50, 60 lots a year done in the zoning office. I've been doing this for 40 years. And it's just not going to help. It's, it's more of a marketing concept than really going to help anybody, and it's just not going to work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next. Next.
Hi, my name's Joel Baycott. Local builder, contractor here. I live here, pay taxes obviously here, town and county unfortunately. The system's not broke, so I don't know why you guys are trying to change it. Can't understand that. No one can give a reasoning behind it. We're not the problem. The locals aren't the problems, the local contractors aren't the problems. It's all the people you guys are letting in, all these big builders, these big subdivisions, not just in the county, not just Clevenger's Corner, but right here in the town too, Laurel Park, you know, the 700 homes that you guys want to put on a very busy street on top of the 300 homes that are already approved next to B-Dubs, the old people homes. And then you want to put 700 more homes on top of that. I mean, that's a, that's a huge problem. I understand you guys can't do nothing about it, but that is a problem also. They're not giving money towards anything, our schools, our roads, our infrastructure. That's the problem. You guys are, if this goes through, you're not killing a little guy like me. I don't stand a chance. I have to go work for those crooks. That's not something I want to do. I want to have something like these farmers want to pass down to my kids. I have kids. I want generations through generations. So I'm definitely against all of this. Affordable housing, these builders aren't doing affordable housing. If this goes through, land is, is hard to go, is hard to come by. That's why the older builders are getting out, and I'm just one of the few younger builders that are trying to get into it. But it's the land, it's the cost of land is crazy. If you guys do this, if I own land and this goes through, I jack up the prices too. So it's not, it's not helping the little guy at all. It's not helping the community. If land's more expensive, it's not, you know, go towards the road system, the school systems, the infrastructure, anything like that. So I just hope it gets voted down and goes away. The system isn't broken, so why try to mess with it? Do something to make money off these data centers. Do something, try and make more money off these, these big builders that come in. Make their profits higher that they have to give in. You know, stop beating up on the locals. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Next.
Hi, my name is Liz Wetzel, and we live up in Jeffersontown. We actually live on a 290-year-old property. Our house is 290 years old. We have absolutely loved living in it, to sit in the main room and talk about that. People were sitting there talking about the shot heard around the world. Just gives us chills. I read, we have five young kids, and we read Little House on the Prairie, and when Pa Ingles goes to hang up his gun on his gun hooks, we look at our wall, and we have historic gun hooks as well. Our property was founded by families who came over from Germany, who came to establish the land for the betterment of their family, a lot of their community coming over. And one thing that all these people have in common is appreciation of generations, generational care. We have 10 acres, and with this, we would love to build a property for my mom on, on our property and to build a house for her, and this would completely make that, like, avoidable. We would not be able to build it. And I, I don't think blanket rules are healthy because there's always exceptions. I understand not wanting to throw up a bazillion houses, but we can't take out a second mortgage on our property for her, and the only way to do that is to section off a small lot. And so I would really ask that you consider the ramifications that this would impose on everybody, especially in a community that's so invested in families and children and intergenerational strength, to consider that family exceptions might be an option. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next.
My name's Catherine Gilbert. I'm a landowner in Rixeville, Virginia since 2018. I always tell people, I don't like to tell them where we came from. We were military. My dad's buried in Arlington. My mom is there now with him. Rixeville was our choice for our 10 acre property. It was going to be our forever home. You might understand that if you ever know anything about military families. I have family in New Jersey that was my mother's family. We're not close to them. All we have are our siblings, because you move so often. We are now grown. We have, my brother is a retired police officer. He lives with me. My mom passed away two years ago after building her dream home. She bought that property with the hopes of having us kids all together. That included if we needed to build another home for my siblings or for one of our grandkids. It was actually primarily bought for me as farmland. So now I'm going to tell you the big secret. I grew up in California. Merced, California, an agricultural breadbasket of the world, but not when I left. Okay? And why? Because of things like this. I've heard buzzwords like affordable housing. I've heard big builders, small builders. I've heard about land rights. But here's the deal. You have big builders come in, the farmers that are big, bigger than me, bigger than our 25 acres or 10 acres. I respect that you are family-generated farmers, but eventually somebody is going to build at Clevenger's Corner next to your land. And the next thing that's going to happen is that owner is going to complain about the dust you kicked up during harvests or the pig manure you put on. And that gets loud. And you know what? They tell you, you can't do it. You know why? Because you're one farmer. You're not 10. I used to tell the people of Merced County, I worked for the ag commissioner's office there. I said, farmers, whether you have two acres, three acres, five acres, or 20 square miles, need to stick together. This is not allowing farmers to stick together. This is a bad plan. You need green buffer zones around big, around big areas, a big development. You don't have it, you're not going to have it. This will prevent it.
Thank you, Ms.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Next.
Good evening. I'm Al Esch. I own property in two different districts here in Culpeper. I'm also a local builder and business owner. I want to start out by saying that I oppose these amendments. Feel like stripping the property rights and everything from people is, is against who we are as a county. And I just, I don't want to repeat a lot of things that other people said here tonight, but I do want to say that when we take value away from land that people own, I, I don't think that sets a good precedent. Also, this, this sort of subdivision that we're talking about here is, is not the problem that we're experiencing here in our county of too much growth. We've heard that a bunch tonight, and I can give you a real life example. Last year, on subdivisions just like this, I built five homes on South Merack. I brought no children to our schools, not one. A few years ago, I built a number of homes out on Stonehouse Mountain Road. How many children did I bring to this school? None. So think about that, when you, when these, these subdivisions that we have gone on here in the town, and I know that's not your responsibility, but those are the results of our schools becoming full and crowded. It's not us small builders out here with, with little pieces of land that are trying to make a living and provide for the future of our children. And so I, I just want to encourage the commission to let the board know that and also that we can give some thought to how we can continue to live here in the, in the way that we do and, and that there's peace between the farmers and the builders and everybody together as we work together as a community. And I also feel like one of the things that these big subdivisions don't do for us is that it doesn't circulate money here in our own community. When we have it doesn't circulate money here in our own community. When we have small builders like myself and Anthony and DJ and many others, we buy our products here local. We use local builder, we use local subcontractors, we use local Realtors. That money stays here in our community, and when we do these big subdivisions, often that money is carried away from here, and jobs are not provided for local people. That's all I have.
Next?
I'm Anthony Herlock. I live in Richardsville, Stevensburg District, been there for 45 years, as much as my family. With limited time, I'm primarily expressing my concern of the proposed impacts of smaller acreage lots, 20 and smaller, that are currently Zone A1, that are not utilized for agricultural uses or services. These lots are not farmland. They are basically utilized for rural residential. The questions I have is should they fall victim to broad zoning ordinance changes? Should these lots be evaluated with property owners for zoning reclassifications that more accurately suit their use or qualify for exemptions? Are there better options such as preserving farmland or agricultural uses currently in land use rather than those non-agricultural land uses in A1 that don't receive tax benefits? I believe there is. I personally have a lot with my home that I purchased in 2014 with 14.42 acres. Following that, I approached my neighbor to purchase additional land to expand it to 16 acres in A1. That way I could conform to zoning. I have two young children. I like to provide them with acreage when they get of age. Or I could have that to provide for reassurance for later on. The current proposal destroys those options, and is seen by many as an overreach of government control. The effort to financially govern and exercise intellectual foresight is not the problem. Penalizing those taxpayers within the county that call this home just to see a developer show up and wave flashy promises and divert in user expenses that raise real estate assessments and still erect homes along the landscape and precious farmland anyways is the problem. Further, comp plan comparison by our representatives and justification that the comp plan supports the county's taxpayers' vision is unrealistic. As based on my professional and personal experience, 80%, most likely higher, of citizens don't know what a comprehensive plan is or what's in it. The whole situation is being viewed as a forceful action of life-altering decision-making by elected officials that are basically missing in action, unknown and out of touch from the representative communities. Further, the arrogant steamrolling and agenda pushing without compromise is building a huge divide between the citizens and our local government. As the planning commission, please don't take your jobs and roles lightly. And recognize that your community relies on you as to provide guidance and as our voice to ensure our best interests and rights are protected. I hope and pray that common sense compromise is utilized by our government officials and that right actions, decisions, or no action is exercised wisely. Often more than not, the best action is no action. May God provide you the wisdom and guidance to make the best decisions moving forward, and thank you for opportunity to listen to your community.
Thank you. After these next two, we, the chair will entertain a motion to actually have a recess.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Joe Daniel. I've been living in Culpeper for 52 years, and I've been building houses in Culpeper for 52 years. And what I am really surprised about, and I won't bore you with all of this stuff. I sent all of this information to you today via email. And, but, what I am really surprised at is that this planning commission has been asked to deal with an issue that really is not an issue. There are 12,000 parcels of land in Culpeper County. For the last 10 years, 28 property owners per year have chosen to sell their land, which means they've subdivided in some little way. And so, here's what the issue is. Is, this is not an issue. You've got 28 property owners out of 12,000 that choose to sell some property on a yearly basis. And yet, this ordinance, I, I say this, this proposed change is going to take property rights away from people who have no interest in selling and have no plan to sell, but they might get in a condition where they have to sell to, to pay for hospital expenses or nursing homes or this sort of thing. And here's the other thing. These lots that are sold in these rural areas are all primarily built by local builders. And they buy the materials locally, they pay subs locally, and it is a great resource for the Culpeper economy. And you're not going to have one of these national builders go messing with that, with these little lots scattered around the county. They want to buy two, three, 500, 700 lots in one place and come in and do it and attack. And you always got to have water and sewer. And as you know, there's only two places in Culpeper County where there are waters and sewer. One is the town of Culpeper, and the other one is Clevenger's Corner. Now let me tell you a little bit about the history of Clevenger's Corner. And I go through there, and I am just surprised. I don't see a single contractor in there from Culpeper. And from what I understand, there hadn't been a single house sold in that project to a citizen of Culpeper County. The citizens of Culpeper County don't want to go into that kind of project. But that's neither hint of that. The Board of Supervisors, that property goes back to 1950s, when the golf course was built by the bowling officers club. And then they, they lost interest in it, but what they did, they built a sewer treatment plant and they built a water treatment plant. So the county inherited these two facilities. In 2005, Syntax Home came in here and bought that land. They've paid the county, and this is one of those things that was, the, the Board of Supervisors at the time thought it was the right thing to do. Syntax gave the county $23 million to replace the water treatment plant and to replace the sewer treatment plant. And you say, what's that got to do with it? Well, for the last four years, the county has subsidized that, those facilities to the tune of $4 million.
Mr. Daniels?
Yeah.
If we kind of bring it to them.
Okay. I'll wrap up. I do not think that what y'all are considering is going to have any impact on the reasonable growth of this community. I think what is happening with these rural lots is great for the economy, is great for the people, and great for the community. Thank you, and good luck to you. And I hope you come up with a solution that works for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. We are, the chair entertained a motion to recess at this time?
Second. So moved.
Do we have a second? Okay, just 10 minutes. Okay. All right, we're going to recess for just 10 minutes or a little bit less. Chair entertaining a motion to come out of recess?
So moved.
Second? Okay, well, now I'm back in session. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Jimmy Jenkins. I'm in the West Fairfax District. Really didn't want to come up to say anything and take your time because I know you're all tired, but there is a couple of points that I think it hasn't been made, and I agree with a lot of them here. But first, let me say that absolutely without question, I'm opposed to the amendments that you've been asked to consider, like so many others that you've heard from tonight. One of the things that I wanted to say, I've heard a lot of talk tonight about taking land out of farm use. I've got a few years on you folks. I'm 80 years old. I spent 60 of it in Culpeper County. So I know a little bit about what's going on in this county, know a little bit about what's going on in this country. How did we form our state and national parks if we didn't take that land out of farm production? I love my open space. There's, nobody likes open space any more than I do. But if you can't afford to own it, you can't afford to control it. And I say to anybody here tonight, if you don't want your land to be developed, then you own it. If you don't want your next-door property developed, buy it. And anything else just doesn't work. That's the only way you're going to control it. And I was really, really disgusted when I heard tonight that a couple of comments about maybe three of you guys that seated tonight on the planning commission not being here next year. That is absolutely absurd. As hard as y'all work, how can the board, and I'll be speaking to every board member that I see about that, how can they even consider such an action? They ask you to review and, and look at this plan over, and they don't even want you to finish it. I, I, I'm just totally disgusted with that. The other thing, as you get older, the thing that your mind doesn't take just right as well, but I seem to recall about 30 years ago, this county, which I had some interest in at that time, was looking at the A1 and A2, which was one acre and two acre, which is now three acre and five acre. What did it do? It hasn't changed anything. But like so many said, the 40 or 50 lots that we're doing in this rural area is not our problem. It's a big lots. And the only thing I can say, I seem to recall also in my feeble mind, was a cluster development. Cluster development. If that's a cluster development, I'm not too interested anymore in cluster. I appreciate your time. Thank you much.
Thank you, sir. Next?
Good evening, you guys. Thanks so much. My name is Mandy Brown. I'm from Cedar Mountain District, and I've had the pleasure to speak for you guys several times over the last few months in regards to this. I want to thank you for all the time, the effort that you, all of y'all have put into it. I know that you've sent it back to the board several times saying, no, they don't like your response. They send it back and say, oh, work a little bit more. You send it back, and then they say, no. They send it back and want you to work on it a little bit more. So now you're finally working on it a little bit more and having a public hearing to get all of the community's input. The letter that the county went out, I really appreciate Sam getting that out and getting it expedited like it did. In my opinion, it was a little bit soft. It was a little confusing to a lot of people. And when I read it, had I not actually known what was going on, I wouldn't have really realized what the true effect was. I too am upset to hear the rumor that three of you have asked for reappointment and aren't going to be here likely. I know that that'll be decided in a closed session by the Board of Supervisors, and then they'll just announce it. You guys are the ones that have been working on this. You put the brakes on it to give us time. When this was brought up last April/May time, I was really shocked. We started doing a few things. And I'm going to tell you right now, I might not be thought of very well to a lot of people in the community because I'm one of those Realtors, but by God, I thought it was my duty, because I am here, I was born and raised here, I have worked here in multiple facets. And for people to think that it's bad of the Realtors, it's only for the Realtors that don't want this, it's, it's our benefit if this doesn't go through, I'm here to tell you, no, it's not. It's a hell of a lot easier to sell a subdivision house than it is out in the county. My job as a Realtor, I have helped several farmers be able to get their parcels sold. Katie, you know. And the reason they did was because they had to go to the Culpeper. They couldn't afford the Culpeper without doing that. That's just one of a lot that I do. And I know these ladies and gentlemen here that are the same position I am, we're the ones that actually go out there, we support SAFE with the Oyster Fest. Maria was here. She was out late last night with Culpeper Businesswomen doing the auction. She's out here doing that. We're the ones that actually help the little leagues. We put those signs and those sponsorships up too, along with our other local business people. The Able Heating and Air, you see those out there. I don't know who went to one of the football games, those banners up there. You don't see Ryan Holmes, you don't see Lennar, you don't see Augustine. You don't see those track builders because they don't put their money here. I'm going to stop. I'm preaching to the choir. I thank you guys. I'm adamantly opposed to this, as a lot of people are for a lot of reasons. I also have it for a personal reason because I have land that this will affect too, and that was in my retirement. Of course, I don't like that. I don't get to have a 401K like a lot of y'all do. So this was mine, and it's going to hurt me personally as well. So I do appreciate your time and your efforts, and I ask you to please send no back to the Board of Supervisors, even if they don't listen to you. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you. As we had asked earlier, if everyone would please have a seat or move to the back of the room, please. We've asked that. Sir? Yes?
I'm good.
No, no, we, we, we want, we have, we have seating here so everyone can have a seat out of respect for the rest of them. So?
I'm not taking any view, and I'm not making any comment. I have my rights to stand unless you have a rule that you can show me published.
In the back of the room is fine. So, and that's the last time we all ask you, okay? In the back of the room. All right?
I'm going to stand.
Sir, would you all make sure that he moves to the back of the room? All right? Can we have him move to the back of the room? Yes. At the, at the back, we'll wait for him. Go ahead.
I got a right to you.
Okay.
But being a tyrant, you work for others.
We actually, we asked the deputies if you would please have him move. That's what we, that's what we've asked everyone to do, so everyone else is complying, and we just want to make sure that he's seated.
When you tell me what rule, you're not a tyrant, you're not a god. You do not rule this, but I insist there are rules you have to go by.
Sir, would, would you just move to the back of the room?
For you? Yes.
Okay, that's, thank you very much, Ms. Hake. Okay, next. Next, please. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Robert Brown from the Cedar Mountain District, and I'm adamantly opposed against this rezoning. I don't like the idea of taking people's property rights, that's for sure. And I would want to appreciate, I thank the board, and, you know, I mean, you've been here, going to be here till 10 o'clock tonight, and it's, it's really a shame because this should have never came down to begin with. Y'all sent it back, I don't know how many different times, and told them they didn't want to do nothing, and it's still continuous. And I would like to also recognize Sam here as the next county administrator, and really, I, I just, I think we're in great hands anyway. I think that deserves a round of applause. But I'm not going to sit here and, and go through everything that everybody said again, because it, it's, it's been said over and over again. I'm adamantly opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next?
Hello, my name is Jacob Gier, and I currently reside in the Stevensburg District. This is my first time doing one of these. I'm 19. I'm not currently a landowner in town, however my parents are. They currently own seven to eight acres, and it was my aspirations in the future, when I got back from school, to acquire maybe two to three more acres to be able to, with my parents' permission, subdivide into two five-acre slots. I was born and raised in this county, and I wish to stay in this county. And I don't believe it's right to not be able to subdivide that property and make me have to pay more with my student debts coming out of school to stay in the county that I was born and raised and loved, to have my own house, to raise my own family here in this county. My grandparents were farmers in Rappahannock. None of us want to subdivide our property. It's not a thing that we want to do. However, my family is ridden with medical diseases. I'm not going to go into specifics. My dad affected with it too, and I'm scared I'm going to be affected with it in the future. And it should be my right as an American to sell the property if I need to, to provide for my medical bills, my parents' medical bills, bills, or my grandparents if it comes to it. I wish to stay in this county and move back here after school and provide for this county. I would like to support this county and possibly start my own business in this county. And I don't believe it's right that I'm gonna have to choose whether or not to even come back here if I can't even build my own house or spend double what I could have to build my own house in this property, in this county. And I appreciate all the work you have done for this. I know you sent the recommendation to the board. I've done a lot of research on this topic. And I know you've sent through recommendations multiple times, they get sent back. I understand that, and I appreciate you taking the time to listen to us. This shouldn't even be a question for our property rights in this county to stay within our generations. I know a gentleman here tonight spoke at the age of twenty-four. I'm nineteen, seen very much the same change, but I was here when it happened. I wasn't away at school yet. I've seen the changes some of these things have occurred, like Clevenger's Corners and all those things. But some of it's good growth, too. The small growth of houses outside, like the one that I want to provide, would be good growth that keeps people born and raised here in the county. And I appreciate all the time you all have taken. I'm gonna uh end there because uh I wasn't originally planning to speak, but um everyone speaking tonight kinda inspired me to do so. So I appreciate all your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Hi, Dwayne Payne, Stevensburg District. I also didn't plan to speak in the night, but the nineteen-year-old man in front of me inspired me, so. Um, no, but all joking aside, um, he did an excellent job. But you could see tonight the people are hurting. Um, and over the past several months, uh, there have been um several, several changes to our code that um that has consumed a lot of time, or changes, proposed changes, and has consumed a lot of time of the citizens. Um, you see, it's ten o'clock tonight. Um, we've wasted too much time already. Um, I would like to recommend that this board wraps this up within this calendar year. Um, I think it's very important to put this behind us so we can all get back to work and not continue to have these same discussions, especially for um an amendment that is, uh, doesn't achieve its purposes. You, when, when you want to preserve farmland, you simply cannot consume more farmland. A ten-acre lot, uh, it's, you know, our ag land is our most valuable resource. And to consume it in larger chunks, it's just, it it defies common sense. Um, clustering, on the other hand, um, you could have some merits, but if you want to preserve ag land and you're concerned about your infrastructure, how do many subdivisions throughout the county work either? So I think you have a bad plan here. I think it's been rushed along. I think we need to step back. Um, we need to step back and um come up with, come up with a plan that has, um, my criteria, when I was in your position, was, um, and with our A1 and our A, it would be to preserve ag land and also preserve our property rights. If the plan doesn't preserve ag land while preserving our property rights, then it's not the right plan. So I strongly suggest that um that you do not move, that you deny this, and uh, and we wrap it up as soon as possible so we can move on to a better plan. Um, I'm fine with this current system staying in place. Um, but if, but if there is a better, if there is a better, um, if there is a better plan out there, that's explore it. And that's fine when it meets those two criterias. That's preserve our farmland, and that's preserve our property rights. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Next.
Good evening. My name's Vicki Jenkins. I live in Jefferson District. Um, first, I'd like to thank you all for all of the hard work that you guys have put, you know, into this plan or whatever they want to call it. Um, I'm opposed to the amendments, um, and I just want to go on record as being opposed for the amendments. I don't need to repeat everything that all these people have already said and take up any more time. But I do want to be on record that I oppose the amendments moving forward.
Thank you very much. Next.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Kurt Christensen. I live in the Richardsville, which is in the Stevensburg Magisterial District. Um, I attended the Board of Supervisors' May twenty twenty-four meeting in which this rural downzoning, you know, runaway train was started. It was started by the Rules Committee of the Board of Supervisors. And that committee, which is not represented by the entire board or landowners or many people here, consists of supervisors, my supervisor, Susan Giugino, Brad Rosenberger, and Paul Bates. You know, they, the problem is, this has been a top-down process. They tried to do this all on their own, and it's gotten the hell out of control because here we are many months later. But um basically, several Rules Committee members said they want to reduce the density of building lots in rural areas. Folks, this means they want to rob people of their existing property rights, plain and simple. This will affect mom-and-pop landowners who live in rural parts of the county or own property there. They often are less affluent than their friends and family members who live in the town of Culpeper or elsewhere. They're often land-rich and cash-poor. Their land is a very important part of their net worth. Selling builder lots helps pay for retirement, exorbitant medical expenses later in life, and educational expenses for kids and grandkids. Why do some supervisors want to steal from the ability of their constituents to provide for their families by stealing their property rights? Will the county government compensate these landowners for the property rights that are, that will be taken? If so, how will those rights, those values be calculated? And uh, another point here is, we're talking about mom-and-pop landowners. We also heard a lot tonight about small local home builders. You know, they employ local people, they buy their products at Cherry Street Lumber, they patronize locally. Uh, the big outfits don't do that. They bring in labor, and they bring in lumber, and they're not doing a whole lot for the local economy. So um, I don't know why in Hades we are, you know, subsidizing the big boys here, but that appears, not you all, but what what has been, you know, given to you. Um, and basically, getting back here to losing our rights and taking money from our retirement and our investments. Look at this. If another government body took actions that devaluated, that devalued a person's 401K, medical savings account, or 529 education plan, you know, somebody would go to jail because it's a hardcore stealing. There's laws against that. However, Culpeper County Government thinks they can willy-nilly do this to rural folks under the guise of slowing growth. You know, that's outrageous. Again, the corporate out-of-area home builders like Ryan Holmes will not be affected by your plans. They build thousands of houses but have deep pockets to play the proffer's game, which at times can resemble extortion. Why are we sticking it to longtime mom-and-pop county residents and letting Ryan Holmes off scot-free? The public deserves an answer to this and and very quickly. And finally, you know, one of the Ten Commandments is, thou shall not steal. Some members of the Board of Supervisors need to be reminded of this as they work to rob mom-and-pop landowners and small local home builders out of their existing property rights. Thank you. And one final point, um, I understand the Farm Bureau has a letter in support of what the supervisors want to do here. I was a board member of the Farm Bureau for fourteen years. I'm a member now, and I hope someone from the Farm Bureau
Okay.
Now, or at the December meeting can come up and explain their position because I don't quite understand it. And typically, when that organization gets involved in a controversial issue, it's done at the annual meeting, and everybody votes on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Christians. Next, anybody else? No one else? Okay. Okay. Okay, we um, at this time, chair entertaining a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed likewise. The public hearing is now closed. We um thank you all for your, I think we had forty-eight um speakers who came down to speak, and and we um thank you for all of your input, and we would definitely take this into consideration. Chair entertaining a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.